Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Regular Meeting. The Council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the City Council takes formal actions on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other businesses of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda. Please note that the City Council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is being also televised live on PSC-TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Through Proclamation Number 20-28, Governor Inslee extended the directive making temporary changes to the Open Public Meetings Act. These virtual meetings will continue until the OPMA restrictions are lifted. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions for items not on the agenda by contacting the city manager, or city clerk, or using the feedback form on the city's website. And once again, I'd like to just remind the community to wear your masks, continue to maintain social distancing, and using disinfectants where needed, and keeping our hygiene in a place where we can avoid from spreading the COVID virus, and to maintain a healthy community, and take care of our loved ones as well. With the housekeeping items out of the way, can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Alvarado is absent.
He's absent tonight, thank you.
Maloney?
Present.
Milney?
Present.
Present.
Serrano?
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas?
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present, thank you very much. So with that, could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Alright, thank you for that. Next, we're gonna get to our Consent Agenda, where all items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council, and will be enacted by a roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda and considered separately. First on the Consent Agenda is the approval of meeting minutes, to approve the minutes of the Pasco City Council Remote Meeting held on October 19th, 2020, and the Remote Workshop held on October 26th, 2020. Next is the Bills and Communications, to approve claims in a total amount of $2,966,038. And next would be the Ordinance PMC Amendment to Preliminary Platt Timeline Extensions, and that is to adopt Ordinance Number 4500 relating to the Preliminary Platt Timeline Extensions, amending the PMC Sections 21.25.080, Adjustments of an Approved Preliminary Platt, and 21.30.010, Applications and Further Authorized Publication by Summary Only. Next on the Consent Agenda would be an ordinance involving parking code updates under Section 10.65.030 of the Pasco Municipal Code, and that is to adopt Ordinance Number 4,501, amending the PMC Section 10.65.030, Extended Unauthorized Parking Prohibited and Further Authorized Publication by Summary Only. Next on the Consent Agenda would be the Wastewater Treatment Plant Sole Source Purchase, to approve Resolutions Number 4006, approving the purchase of the Instrumentation System Components from HAC for the Municipal Wastewater Treatment Plant. To approve Resolution 4007, approving the purchase of the Single-Stage Centrifugal Fuel Turbul blowers from Sulzer for the Municipal Wastewater Treatment Plant. And that is all the items listed on the Consent Agenda, and with that, can we have a roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So if everybody agrees to those items on the Consent Agenda, I would entertain a motion from Mayor Protem Barajas.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Thank you, there's been a motion to move to approve the Consent Agenda as read? Do I hear it second?
I'll second that, Serrano.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Yeah, got a little ahead of myself there. So with that, can we have a roll call on that vote, please?
Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Milney?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Barajas?
Yes.
And Martinez?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that, Council. And next is Proclamations and Acknowledgements, None Listed, Reports from Committees and/or Officers. Do we have any council members that would like to report on anything today? Okay, if not, then we'll move right along to Item Number 7. So we have hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. The first one is the Ordinance Continued Public Hearing for Vacating a Portion of East Pueblo Street. And would we'd like to have Rick White give us a quick report or information on this subject. Mr. White, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, sir, I am, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. And of course, Council has seen this proposed vacation several times now. It's always been premised on the hope that the entire right-of-way would be vacated once agreed upon by all the inviting owners. Unfortunately, that still has not occurred, but staff has been in contact with the applicant that has indicated that the use of at least their parcels under control will include storage, which is easily accommodated for emergency access through the project permitting process. So the proposed vacation, as indicated on the city map to City Council, will accommodate the applicant's needs and also respect the ability of the one lone holdout owner to retain public street access through Pueblo Street. So once the continued public meeting is concluded, staff would recommend Council's favorable consideration of this proposed street vacation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. White. Before I open a public hearing, I would ask the Council, or excuse me, I would ask Council if they have any questions of staff before I open this public hearing? I guess I would like to start with just one question, Mr. White. So this one individual landowner that hasn't responded, is there any liability for us moving forward on this, on this subject?
Well, Mr. Briggs can probably be a better judge of that, but my guess is, no, sir, there isn't. Coincidentally, the lone property holdout also vacated a portion of Montana Street, which runs north and south through his property several years ago. So I don't believe there's any liability on the city's part whatsoever. If the lone holdout property owner, Mr. Nunez, wants to use a Pueblo Street right-of-way, he can, he will be able to do so. It's still available.
Okay, alright.
And I was just at that, that the process proposed and detailed in the, in the council document is consistent with RCW and Pasco Municipal Code, which tracks with that RCW as well.
Well, thank you very much for that. With that, I'm gonna open the public hearing.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Serrano.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was a delay. Yes, Councilmember Serrano, go ahead.
Mr. White, is there a reason why, Mr., I think you said Nunez, is he non-responsive still, or where are we with that?
No, he's not non-responsive. We've made personal contact with him, and he also is assisted by a particular builder that has been offering Mr. Nunez advice, and they've simply concluded that there is no benefit to them to vacate the right-of-way. Reasons unknown.
Interesting. Okay, and we talked with the builder as well? I mean, you know, I know we can only do as much as we can, but it seems like an obvious slam dunk, and it's odd that, you know, someone's tripping us up here.
Yes, we have spoken. Actually, that's how contact was made, through the builder, because Mr. Nunez was not responsive at all, so we've done as much as we can.
Okay, no, I don't question, but you know, it's good to have that for the public to hear that we're doing everything we can, and you know, we're doing what we can. So I appreciate your efforts and your staff's efforts, thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano and Mr. White. I'll give it one more second for any other council members that may have a question of If not, I'm gonna open this public hearing. And to my knowledge, there has been nobody writing in to ask for questioning or comments on this subject, but I'll go through the formal process in requesting for anyone who wishes to speak on this, on this case and this topic. And then we'll have a second call, and a third call, a final call for public comment regarding this topic. Okay, so I'm gonna close this public hearing, and now I will ask for my motion from Councilmember Barajas. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm navigating my way back. I move to adopt Ordinance Number 4502, vacating a portion of East Pueblo Street and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's been a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 4502, vacating a portion of East Pueblo Street, and further authorizing the publication by summary only. Do I hear it second?
With Councilmember Maloney, I'll second that.
There's a second by Councilmember Maloney. So with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? And pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. White and Council. I think we did our due diligence and did everything we can to make it as effective and as correct as possible, so thank you very much for that. Next, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. We have Resolution 2021 Legislative Priorities. Mr. Zabel, do you wanna lead us off on that one?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Council. We're back with the 2021 Legislative Priorities, and you'll note two changes. One, Brown and Murray, our legislative liaison, did quite a bit of work to reformat some of the language, not so much the content, but just getting that down so all of our major points fit on one page now. And then second, is some nuanced changes to the mental health funding portion. As Council recall, we had probably a more specific proposal when we brought this here in draft form, and what's being recommended tonight is language along the lines of mental health services, increased, excuse me, increased funding for mental health services, including but not limited to additional local option tools. So that kinda leaves the spectrum a little bit more broad, as Council knows, and we've learned during a legislative session, there's a lot of paths to success, so this takes away the one path, I think, that was mentioned specifically. Not necessarily take it away, but it's not as specific as what was previously mentioned.
Yep, well, I can sure appreciate it. I noticed you did work on it and catered to the request that we made last week. Is there any council members that have any comments or questions about this topic for If not, Mayor Protem Barajas, would you like to entertain a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 4008, declaring the city's legislative priorities for the 2021 Session of the Washington State Legislature.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve Resolution Number 4008, declaring the city's legislative priorities for 2021 Session of the Washington State Legislature. Do I hear it second?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I will second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roach. With that, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 4008, signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And pass unanimously. Thank you. Alright, next, we have a resolution granting limited authority to city manager for land easement right-of-way acquisitions. Mr. Worley, do you wanna go ahead and give us an update on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council, good evening. Council may recall that we presented this item back in, on, I believe it was October 5th, and there was a good discussion about it, some comments from council members related to it. And based on those comments, and a quick review of our right-of-way acquisitions over the last five years, we are proposing to make a few changes to what was previously proposed. In the Agenda Report, you'll see the items that are listed that we revised since the last time we presented this to Council. The first one was just adding some language to the resolution title. I noticed that the easement portion of what is being proposed was missing out of the title, so we added that. And then we reduced the scope of the authority down to a level that is more reflective of the level of acquisitions that cover about 90% of what we do on most of our projects. And so we reduced it from 300,000 down to 150,000. And then we changed the word in Section 1, and replaced the word included with specified, so it'd be projects specified in the capital improvement program. And then in Section 4, we excluded access easements in the city manager's authority to be able to vacate easements, because there is a specific municipal code related to authorizing council approval of the vacation of access easements, which is something that Council may remember, we recently got into a discussion about related to the Coca-Cola easement, which we will be back to Council shortly about that. So we wanted to make sure that this is in line with that authority as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Worley. Staff, or, excuse me, Council, any questions or comments for Mr. Worley?
This is Councilmember Roach. As I was just reading through the resolution, I wanna make sure I'm on the correct Agenda item just a moment. I was, I noticed that it said that it should be something that is approved within the capital improvement plan, and then down below in the resolution, it said something that I wasn't sure whether it's a and/or, or a both-and sort of situation. So that's what I was trying to find, and I did not highlight this section, because I'm not that savvy with my iPad still.
The bottom of Section 1, Councilmember Roach?
Yes, that's right. Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, that is the section. So in Section 1, is it the case that it could be approved by Council for the CIP? Or a different instance, or is it both and? There's my question.
The way that it's worded, it looks like it could be or. In other words, there are situations where a project may carry over into an approved budget that may not be in the CIP. And this is typical for projects that are getting towards the end, or near the end, the design's been going on, and we may need an easement, a small easement or something just to get it out the door. And it may be in the budget, but we may have removed it from the CIP already, because we thought it was gonna be done. And so it basically is covering both aspects, but either way, the idea would be that it would only apply to projects that have been approved by either of those two documents from Council.
Thank you for that clarification, and just wanted to say that I do appreciate the additional language and the change, the revision in this, because to me, it was a consideration of trading oversight for efficiency, and I don't feel as concerned about that with the changes, so thank you.
Thank you, Council, if I could just jump in, there is one other, looking at that language, there's the potential of a budget amendment. So you could have a project that may not be in your capital improvement project, or your approved budget, but if Council were to do a budget amendment during the budget year, which would ultimately make it part of the approved budget, but that could be something that wasn't contemplated in the original budget, or the CIP, but Council through a separate action amended their budget for a project that needed property through right-of-way or easement, that would also extend to that as well.
Alright, thank you for that, Mr. Zabel and Director Worley. If there's no other questions or comments by the Council, I would entertain a motion. Mayor Protem Barajas?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 3995, granting limited authority to the city manager regarding acquisition of real property and easements, granting easements over right-of-way relating to private or public development projects and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you, so we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 3995. Do I hear it second?
This is Councilman Milney, I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Milney. Thank you for that. With all, with that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And pass unanimously. Thank you, Council, and thank you, staff, for the work there. Moving on to question, to Item Number 9, Unfinished Business, None Listed, and New Business. We have some new business tonight. We have an extension of the appointed, the appointment of six Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commissioners. And, is he, Mr. Zabel or Angela? Angela, are you on the line tonight?
I am, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
The item before you tonight is for the extension of six of the Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commissioners. This action correlates to the action from the September 21st Regular Meeting, where City Council approved Resolution 3992, which extended the commission through December 31st of 2021. These, with these appointments, there would be one vacancy on the commission, and staff is recommending the reappointment of the six commissioners tonight.
Well, thank you, Director Angela, appreciate that. Any questions or comments by Council?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
I just wanted to ask a quick question. So I know we disappointed, obviously, in a number of new commissioners to this board, and their terms, obviously, were very immediately expiring due to the nature of how we set up and extended that, that board, or commission. With the one vacant position, will that need to be extended as well? Will that be taken care of once we appoint someone to that position? Will just appoint them until the end of the extended term?
That will occur along with the appointment. That will occur simultaneously to the appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Maloney, and I will be contacting the members of that committee to maybe discuss another opportunity for either interviews and/or appointment of that additional person when the time becomes available to do that. So with that said, Mayor Protem, would you like to entertain a motion?
Absolutely, I move to extend the appointments, appointments of Eloise Sparks, Jeffrey Robinson, Joelle Nun Sparks, Kyle Salts, Maria Torres Mendoza, and Naema Chambers Smith to the Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commission through December 31st, 2021.
Okay, there's been a motion to extend the appointments of Luis Sparks, Jeffrey Robinson, Joel Nun Sparks, Kyle Salts, Maria Torres Mendoza, and Naomi Chambers Smith to the Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commission through December 31st, 2021. Do I hear it second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Maloney. So all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign? We'll pass unanimously. So for those members that are currently on the committee, I hope you're watching tonight, and there's a trust and confidence that you will move forward and do what you were so passionately directed to do, and so we're looking forward to good things happening, and thank you very much for serving on this committee. So thank you for that. Next, we have bid award for Court Street Overlay. Director Worley, would you like to update us on this, please?
Yes. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. I'm gonna turn this item over to our CIP manager, Maria Sierra, so she's gonna cover this one for us.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So I'm bringing to you an award recommendation for the West Court Street Overlay Project. This project is part of our annual overlay or payment preservation program. The bids were really competitive. Our lowest bidder is Central Washington Asphalt. They came under our engineer's estimate, received actually four bids, and they were all under our engineer's estimate. We have reviewed the bids, we found no issues. All the documentation for responsiveness and responsibility of the bidder were adequate, and we could talk about the scope of the project, which is an overlay of West Court Street between the 395 Overpass and Route 40. And it includes some grinding of existing asphalt, the overlay itself, some striding and replacement of some signal loops. With that, if you have any questions, I'd like to answer.
Thank you, Maria, for that report, and it looks like the bidding was favorable with Central Washington Asphalt, and appreciate that very much. Council, any questions or comments for Maria? If not, Mayor Protem, would you like to entertain a motion?
Absolutely, I move to award the Court Street Overlay Project to Central Washington Asphalt Incorporated of Moses Lake, Washington, in the amount of $390,111, and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Okay, there's been a motion to award the Court Street Overlay Project to Central Washington Asphalt, Inc. of Moses Lake, Washington, in the amount of $390,111, and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents. Do I hear it second?
This is Councilman Milney, I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Milney. So all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And pass unanimously. Thank you. So tonight, on our next, next on our agenda, we have miscellaneous discussion, and we have a special treat, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Zabel.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and I do have a few items, but I wanted to lead off tonight, Council, and introduce you to our new deputy city manager. As most of you know, we recently conducted a search within the western US for a As most of you know, we recently conducted a search within the Western U.S. for a deputy city manager to replace longtime deputy city manager Stan Strevel. And we drew about 40 applicants from as far away as Texas and Arizona, California, Oregon, Alaska, and a number of them in Washington, evaluated, I think, some excellent candidates along with the directors and other key staff. We did have some limitations, as councils aware, with COVID. Typically, a position like this, we'd had a community reception, we're unable to do that. But nonetheless, finalists were submitted to, I think, a fairly rigorous process and extensive backgrounding effort. And as I announced a couple of months ago, at the end of that effort, Mr. Adam Lincoln, an established professional from Washington State, was appointed as the city's next deputy city manager. So, Mr. Lincoln has since fulfilled his obligations to his current, to his former employer, excuse me, City of Pullman, and as well as the task of relocating his family to the area. And so, Adam's first day with us was just this last Friday, and it's my pleasure to introduce him tonight. And a couple of words about Adam. As I mentioned a minute ago, he comes from City of Pullman most recently, where he served as a city administrator for about four years there. And prior to Pullman, he was assistant to the city manager with the City of Lakewood, Washington, for three years. And then earlier in his career, he actually served as an intern or an analyst in City of CTAC and a legislative aide to state legislators, not probably the easiest job in the world. Adam's International City Managers Association member, as well as a leadership role in the Washington chapter of that, serves on the board, matter of fact, with myself. Adam's a graduate of Western Washington University and has an MPA from the University of Washington. That in school, yeah. So, Adam brings a strong set of skills, and as I mentioned in my email to you all earlier today, we're going to take advantage of those and work him to the bone. And with that, Mayor and Council, Adam Lincoln.
Mr. Lincoln, thank you very much for being here tonight. As we had expressed earlier, are you ready for the time of your life?
I think so, Mr. Mayor.
That's wonderful. And if I'm not mistaken, isn't the mayor of Pullman the announcer for the Cougs?
Yes.
So, does that mean you can announce for our football team?
I'll do my best. I'd love to try and stand in for him. He's the world famous voice of the Cougs, so, yeah, tough act to follow.
You've got a pretty good voice yourself, so why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself, and then the council can ask you a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Pleasure to meet you all. Sorry, it's virtual right now, but hopefully, we can get our in-person meetings or some Zoom meetings here in the near future. Really excited about this, this opportunity to join the City of Pasco. I've known Mr. Zabel for a handful of years now and always respected the work that he's done, so it's a great opportunity for myself and my family to get to join the team here at the City of Pasco. My family will be joining us soon. I've got two young daughters, a kindergartner and a year-and-a-half-year-old, so we're all excited to be a part of this really quickly growing community. My dad grew up here, and my grandparents lived here for many, many years, so it's really nice to be back in the area, and we're looking forward to trying to find permanence and buying a home here in the not-so-distant future. We just have to sell one first, and then we'll be on the hunt here. So, thank you very much, and looking forward to continuing on service here at the City of Pasco.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln. Council, anybody have any questions or comments they would like to express to Mr. Lincoln?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
A pleasure to meet you. Look, I also look forward to getting to know you a little better. Certainly, if there's anything that you're looking for in terms of reaching out to the community, anybody you want to get introduced to, I think across this council, we know most everybody, so I'm certainly more than happy to make some introductions if there's somebody you're looking for, some sort of subject that you're interested in. So, we're a pretty engaged bunch, and all of us are pretty passionate, I'd say, so look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anybody else?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I just wanted to say welcome to you and your family. We had the opportunity to meet briefly in Olympia, and so it was really exciting to hear that you are a good fit for Pasco, so welcome again.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Roach.
Hi, this is Mayor Protem Barajas. Just welcoming you to the City of Pasco, I'm a Cougs. I am a mother of two Cougs. So, welcome to the City of Pasco, and same sentiment as Councilmember Maloney. I'd be happy to introduce you to anyone within my network, which is not very extensive, but look forward to meeting you in person soon.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. I look forward to it as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr., anybody else? If not, we have a couple of other council members, one who couldn't be with us tonight, but the other two, I'm sure will love to take the time, and if not, if they haven't already introduced themselves, they will, they will. And just again, Mr. Lincoln, welcome. We're long awaiting for you to get here. I think Dave will might get some sleep now and maybe a little help. So, we're excited for you to be here, and we just, you know, want to welcome you into our family here in Pasco, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. And I did have just a few more items. We have a couple, just brief PowerPoints, I promise, but it's some important information I think you're going to want to hear about. Chief Rosky is going to lead us off with an update on opioid and fentanyl campaign that we're working with the Assistant U.S. Attorney's Office for Eastern Washington with. And with that, Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Zabel, council members. Important topic this evening on a project that is underway right now, who will run through November, on the opioid/fentanyl outreach project in Eastern Washington. Opioid abuse, specifically fentanyl, in the last few years has become a critical issue, and so a joint effort with local law enforcement, DEA, the Drug Enforcement Administration, and the U.S. Attorney for the Eastern District have put a concerted effort on this issue that is out there right now. On the slide, there are a couple of projects that have, one of those has come and gone. That's the take-back, drug take-back that we did at Walmart, was very successful the Saturday of October 24th. That's an annual event for us that we partner with the DEA on. And then Ribbon Week, which is literally a drug awareness week for us to be prepared and recognize drug abuse. And then, of course, right now, it's specifically opioid abuse and fentanyl. One issue with this slide, I would like to just point out, even if you missed the Saturday drug take-back, our police lobby has a receptacle where we will take in any, no questions asked, any prescription drugs that need to be discarded, so they're not setting around. Many household drugs are abused, as we know, and so this is an opportunity for us to take those back. Our lobby is closed right now, but if somebody will ring the bell at the front lobby, instruct our staff that they have some prescription medicine or prescription drugs that they want to put in the receptacle, we'll certainly aid them in doing that. Next slide, please. A little awareness about the, specifically about fentanyl. And it's, although in law enforcement, it's a pretty common term, extremely dangerous for law enforcement officers because of the lethality of it, but you should know that fentanyl is a synthetic opioid that is 80 to 100 times stronger than morphine. Pharmaceutical fentanyl was developed for pain management treatment of cancer patients, typically through a patch in the skin. Because of its powerful opioid properties, the fentanyl is also diverted for abuse. They find ways to synthetically abuse it, which often results in overdose deaths. Clandestine, clandestinely produced fentanyl is primarily manufactured in Mexico. I put up there a couple of street names, just in case you happen to be talking to people and wonder what they're talking about, probably doesn't mean a lot to, hopefully, to our listeners and certainly to our council members. But another thing you might, just from an awareness standpoint, and part of this whole project is to maybe make family members, friends, loved ones, that are a little more aware about what fentanyl looks like, and if somebody in their family or friends maybe is an abuser and maybe needs some help. And so, fentanyl is typically injected or inhaled like heroin. Oftentimes, they usually, they smoke fentanyl in a foil, so that they can ingest that into their system. Next slide, please. The issue with fentanyl is how strong it is, and two milligrams can be fatal. And so, you'll notice on the slide some, a little package of Splenda. The granular, a granular of Splenda could be fatal. That's how potent it is. And next slide? It's often, oops, next slide? Oh, there it is. The, it's illegally made in clandestine labs, but it's very hard for the layperson to detect what is an illicit versus illicit drug. You see a couple of pictures there. Fentanyl can be 50 times more potent than heroin. So, for those in the, that are familiar with drugs, it's extremely potent and extremely lethal. Next slide, please. These are some recent seizures in the last year or so in Pasco that we have had, and a little description down there. But the issue is when they're produced in a clandestine lab, they aren't controlled. So, unlike what we see pharmaceutical drugs here in the U.S. are strictly controlled, you know exactly the dose that you're getting in each amount. When they're clandestinely or illegally made, there is no quality controls. So, you may get a whole lot of fentanyl in a pill and not so much in another. And that's really the concerning part that we have, because it literally cannot be regulated. You're playing, people use the analogy that with these pills, unregulated, you're playing the Russian roulette every time you take, when you just don't know what's in it. Next slide, please. The, just to kind of bring, as an awareness, the seizures that we have seen continue to skyrocket on us. So, you'll see the number of pills in 2019 compared to year-to-date, and we're not even done with the year yet, of where the seizures, the amount of seizures that we have. So, it is readily available. It is extremely concerning for us, and it's taking a lot of our efforts. Next slide? As comparison, across the state, you'll see some of the Eastern Washington cities, and you'll see where Pasco ranks up there. Next slide, please. So, in comparison, Benton and Franklin County, as far as Eastern Washington, unfortunately, we're not doing so well with the number of seizures and drug cases in our two counties compared to other Eastern Washington, although it's still critically dangerous in a lot of Eastern Washington cities. You'll see where it is, it is an absolute concern for us here locally, hence the reason for us partnering with this program. Next slide? And this slide really brings it home, and I promised Mr. Zabel that I would keep this short, but I thought I wanted to make sure that we ended with why we're so concerned, because of the lethality. Fentanyl overdose deaths, these are the deaths by somebody getting one of those hotshot pills, a pill that isn't regulated. Since 2018, you'll see 20 and 19, and where we are in 2020. And once again, we're not done with this year, and we already have eight lethal overdoses that we're dealing with. With that, next slide has questions. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, I appreciate your time, and I certainly, this is a concern, and our partner with DEA and with the U.S. Attorney certainly will show you that this is an epidemic status or, yeah, status for us.
Thank you, Chief Rosky. Thank you, Chief Rosky. We'll start with Councilwoman Roach. Did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, Chief Rosky, about whether you know or have an idea why it's higher rate of usage seizures in Benton and Franklin Counties versus other parts of Eastern and Central Washington? Is there a, is there an understanding of why that is so?
Yeah, I don't think we have an absolute understanding, but we do know that the interstate system here with southern and eastern interstate trafficking, working its way up from here, up through the Yakima Valley, is part of the distribution route. So, you're just likely to run across more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Well, Chief, thank you so much for presenting on this. Incidentally, I had a training earlier today or a conversation about some more national security-related things, and of all things, fentanyl was one of the things that popped up. There's a, this is a big issue, not just from a drug trafficking standpoint, but just as a human health issue. Now, one thing I think I understand, Chief, is that this can be really dangerous for the officers to come in contact with, because it can be so easily absorbed through the skin. Can you tell me a little about how our officers are experiencing this and how we're able to protect them?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. So, we have changed our search patterns and techniques to minimize that. We use additional PPE when searching vehicles or articles that could have fentanyl or drugs in it. Unfortunately, it is extremely dangerous. At some point, somebody has to conduct those searches, and it's our officers. We do a dual officer search system now, so no officer is searching by themselves in case one of them becomes affected. And then, of course, as you know, with our partnership with the Fire Department, we all have Narcan in our vehicles and when the officers are searching those. And that's a great deterrent, but unfortunately, it's not, it's not an absolute cure, but it is a piece of prevention. So, I appreciate that you asking that question and your concern.
Absolutely. I think that's another big reason to make sure that we have the adequate supplies of Narcan for our officers and for our firefighters, both the community members, and try to prevent those overdoses, and then also to protect them from what they may inadvertently run into. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Chief Rosky, you by any chance know, I'm just curious to know if the people affected by it that have been, that have died from this, was it, do you know the age range of this, of the people who have, that's been lethal to? Is it younger people or relatively more mature or older people?
Yeah, I don't have the exact numbers. I can certainly have those pulled for you. It'd be easy for us to do, but it isn't targeted at just a youth or experience. It'd be easy for us to do, but it uh it isn't targeted at just a youth or experimental maybe um uh what you might think from people being immature, it it runs the gamut, but we'll, I can pull those numbers for you.
Yeah, and I guess I find it interesting. I mean, what captured my attention is when you talked about, you know, Russian roulette with those with those pills and not knowing how much uh the lethal dose uh that each one of them has. And it just curious, I mean, it just, it's a sad situation that uh that we're losing this many people to to this drug trafficking problem. So um I appreciate what you're doing and uh focusing on an effort to try to reduce this and uh yeah, I would I would be all for uh whatever we have to do to make it uh so we can control this this issue. So thank you for this report.
I I I think awareness is is really key so that loved ones and family members have a have an appreciation for what might be out there and how and extremely how dangerous it is and uh and getting in the mental with some intervention and getting some help.
Okay. Well, thank you for for your report.
Thank you.
And thank you Council. We we intended on providing this report last week. We went a little long last week, so appreciate the time tonight. I do have a couple more quick reports, but I think you'll probably hear a little bit more about this given the seriousness of the issue in our region. So just uh probably consider this a one-on-one on fentanyl. Uh other uh Chief Gears is gonna be on, he's gonna talk a little bit about COVID testing and then we're gonna also talk about utility assistance, both only take a few minutes, but Chief.
Uh thank you Mayor, Council. Am I transmitting clearly?
Yes, you are.
All right. So you do have a slide up there that's showing uh the testing that was uh through last week. Uh today, the test site actually ran six hundred and one samples through. Uh our site's designed to run five hundred and even with that, the longest wait time was about twenty minutes. So we were pretty excited about the numbers that ran through. The previous high uh for this site over the last month, uh plus one week was four hundred eighty-seven, so this was quite a day-to-day. Uh we do have to remember the National Guard sites closed on uh Mondays, so that probably contributed to the the high that was on today, uh high numbers that were on today. Um the uh one of the highlights is last week, uh they get a uh on-scene site for uh one of the processing facilities and ran uh four hundred and eighty-eight people through there. Uh and that went really well and actually only had a three percent positive rate, which was really good for the site since they had an outbreak there. Um the uh going through my notes here real quick, the cost to date's been about three hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand, uh which is, as you know, reimbursable from state health. Um our positive rates running about twelve point two-six at the site. Um and with that, uh oh, one other I thought interesting statistic out of state, um they've tested six hundred eighty-one people from fifteen other states through that site and fifty-six percent of their people are walk-in. So John, if you want to switch the slides, let's see what else we have here real quick. Um customer ratings have been running very high through the site. Uh even one of the people that had almost a fifteen-minute wait still gave him a five uh star today. Um and but again, they were very busy and the fifty-six percent of the people are averaging his walk-in, so it'd be nice if we could get more pre-registrations. That would speed the site up a little bit more. John? Next slide. Okay, I guess that's it. So um is there any questions about the site from council members?
Well, I don't have any, uh I I just wanna say that every time that, the couple times that I've been through there, it's been absolutely incredible. Uh you go in, uh I had one car in front of me one time, uh but still didn't spend more than five, five to ten minutes there, so uh I think I think they're doing great there and the and the the staff uh does a great job and every time I go by, I see uh I see multiple cars coming in and out. So uh I am just pleased um and happy to see the amount of people that are going in uh to get tested. I just, you know, hopefully that by testing, we can reduce our numbers uh for by by uh reducing the the possibility of of spreading the virus. And I am, it is interesting that people from out of state would come and check it out, but um but anyway, uh thank you very much for that report, Chief Gears. Any other council members have any ca- questions or comments? If not, thank you.
Okay, so Deputy Director Buckley is going to chat with us a little bit about uh experience, Finance Department's experience with the utility assistance uh Cares Grant money.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Um we uh we did start the Finance Department. Uh I'm not sure, can you see me okay and hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and to you.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. Um with the Finance Department did start the Grant Assistance Program information sharing last week. Uh we sent letters to service addresses that were on our delinquent list, approximately fifteen hundred of those letters, and they were both in English and Spanish. And also, we followed up with mail letters to um situations where the service address and the billing addresses differed, just to make sure that we were communicating well. Um and you may have been able to see that on the city's website, uh there's uh on the very front page, there's a Cares Utility Assistance Grants uh picture and box where people can get all kinds of valuable information related to the grant and um and links to uh email address and how to apply online on the neighborly program. Um as of today, we had approximately a hundred applications and those were in a various stages of completion. Uh approximately half were completed and half were uh just partway through the process. Um and and we did receive three paper for mail, uh or paper applications in the city's drop box. Um moving forward, we just continue to work uh on communicating well via the phone mainly. We're getting a lot of uh phone calls coming into customer service and then working also on calling people and providing information to be helpful. That's where we are now. Can I answer any further questions?
Well, thank you for that, Council.
Yeah, this is uh Councilwoman Maloney, just one quick question.
Okay.
Could could you remind me when the program closes? I know it's a really quick turnaround of this one.
Yeah, it is. It's November thirtieth. We need to have people submit their application by November thirtieth at noon.
All right, so basically the rest of this month and and that's pretty quick turnaround, so I I appreciate how the the thorough outreach.
That's our hope and uh one thing that this, uh we've kind of tried to encourage people to do is to apply on the neighborly website because then it uh eliminates any need to send things through the mail and makes it quicker.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to note that uh prior to coming here, uh it was on the news uh that Richland and Pasco were providing this service to our communities and um uh so it's it's being uh it's being communicated throughout uh the media as well, so it's good news. So thank you very much for that report, Mr. Zabel.
Thank you.
So the one last thing I had, this is just a fun thing, uh obviously, we had a a little bit different Hal- Halloween experience uh the community over this last weekend, but our trunk-or-treat event, which was a drive-through event, COVID-safe drive-through event, we had approximately five hundred and fifty cars and a thousand kids served. So all those uh uh safety kits that uh staff led by April Colwell was uh working on are are out the door and and out in the community.
Well, thank you very much for that. That is good to hear. Uh I was at home and we literally just got three little kids that showed up to trick-or-treat and understand why and actually appreciated uh appreciated it, uh to be honest with you. Uh but uh it was really quiet up in in our neck of the woods, whereas normally it is it it is just, you know, a rush with all kinds of people in our neighborhood, but under the circumstances, I was pretty happy to see uh the the lack of trick-or-treaters and the people taking precautions and going to safe, safer events such as those. Uh we realize in in many areas, many people, uh at least what shows on on the media that other cities, big cities, uh were having parties of hundreds and thousands of peoples in the same place. So um I think it just goes to show that we're doing our best and trying hard, um and we care about our community. So uh a a shout out to the community and thank you for that. And we're trying, a- as as you know, putting on this event, we're trying to to make it to where we can have some kind of normalism, but uh obviously, it's not even close at this point. But again, I just wanna uh say thank you for everyone who took the precautions and made it safe for our kids and our families.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Council.
And I just wanted to uh to piggyback on what you're saying, that I got to attend, the line was really long. Um it was, but the wait was about twenty minutes is a good way to teach my kids some patience because they're just itching for candy. And uh we had a blast though. The 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 trunk-or-treat people were dressed up, they were, you know, it was such a fun time that everybody seemed to be enjoying and uh I didn't recognize April Colwell, she was in a panda suit uh with the panda head on, but she recognized me somehow. I was a scarecrow, I was dressed up and um one hundred percent transparency here, uh the kids are not the only ones who got candy, just gonna say that. Um I may have gotten a bag for myself.
That's great, Councilwoman Roach. All right. Anything else, Mr. Zabel? Okay, so next, uh we would, we do have a need for an executive session tonight. Uh let me move right along here to my agenda.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, could I just jump in real quick?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I just wanted to remind everyone that obviously tomorrow's election day, so um we already have some really great turnout um all across the state and certainly in Franklin uh County, but please make sure to get out there and and turn your ballots in. Um there are a number of drop boxes, courthouse, um over by the Happo Center, um great opportunities, easy spots to be able to just drop it off real quick. Um and also, um there's been a number of rejected ballots as well. Um actually went through and perused the uh rejected list for Franklin County and actually found someone I knew, um made sure to send him a message and so they could go get it cleared up. Your vote matters, use it. Thanks.
Thank you for reminding us, uh Councilmember Maloney. And I guess i- is there anybody else that wants to make a last comment before we go into executive session? I was gonna I I was gonna actually save it for uh for afterwards, but I think most people will probably sign out being that we're going into executive session, so I just wanted to share with with the community that uh yes, with this environment um in which we we are experiencing today, an environment that I I've never seen in my lifetime when it came to elections, um there can be a lot of stress and a lot of anxiety that comes along with with uh these times that we're living in today and and um it it's so hyped up that many times we kind of lose grasp of uh of some of the 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 basic things that we we really need to to think about and regardless of um of your political, of what you said politically, I just wanna encourage everyone to remember that um that we're all in this together and regardless of which way this vote goes tomorrow night, uh or maybe it might take a week to to actually get uh of the results completed, but I just wanna encourage the community to remember that I hope that we don't just focus and set our eyes on thinking that either one person or one party can can fix all the problems of of this country. Um what's gonna fix the problems of this country is us working together, regardless of the outcome of what happens tomorrow. And um I just wanna encourage everyone that to just to just be respectful, um let let's show our Pasco pride and and just remember what's really important, and that is that that we live by the golden rule and treat others the way we want to be treated. And um and just remember that not everything in life will go the way you want it to go, but even no mo- no regardless of the outcome, we just need to continue to work together and be respectful for one another and uh and just take light of the important things that uh that we all live for and that we all strive for, and that is just peace and harmony in our community and helping one another so that we can all um just live the best possible lives we can have. So um I hope you all, everyone takes that to heart and be respectful and um and again, just just be a positive light in your community as much as you can, regardless of what happens, and um and we just hope for the best. We hope that we can continue to maintain this quality of life we have in this area and and hopefully we can maintain being the the best country in the world. And the only way we can do that is by being an example to to everyone, uh our community members and even uh other countries so that we can show the unity we have here. So with that, uh we will need about twenty minutes uh for our executive session and I will come back and then adjourn the meeting after that. So thank you very much for showing up tonight. Uh we will, again, we will be back in twenty minutes and with that, we are now in the executive session. Thank you.[1542.66]